meeting in order. Welcome. Those who are joining us in the audience, those who are joining us virtually, we welcome you here. At this time, as with every meeting, we start with the invocation. We're going to ask that Mr. Rajan Zed, President of the Universal Society of Hinduism, would come. If all would please stand for the invocation immediately following, if we could repeat the pledge of allegiance. And I wanted to say, Mr. Rajan is joining us all the way from Nevada, came to pray with us tonight, and he also has a guest all the way from Nepal. So it's an interesting conversation. So welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I shall be reading from ancient Hindu scriptures, some as old as 1500 BCE in Sanskrit, and then interpret in English. Om Bhur Bhuvahasvahat Tatsavitur Vare Nayam Bhargo Devasy Dimahi Diyo Yona Prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme, whose inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamaya, Tamsoma Jyotirgamaya, Mriti or Mamrata Gamaya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasamada Saktastatham Karyam Karma Samachara Sakto Hya Charan Karma Paramapunati Pursha Karma Neva He Samshidi Masitaj Ankhadhyaa Loka Sangreha Me Vapi Sampashankar Tomra Hasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Vavatu Sahana Bhanaktu Sahaviryan Karbaba Hai Djasvi Navadita Mastu Ma Vidhvisa Bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samneva Kuti Samna Hirdjaniwa Samnam Astu Vomano Yatha Vasusa Hasti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one, that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And, Mr. Rajan, before you leave, certainly we are going to, you've asked that we would take a picture with you. But before we do that, we always have our guests. And to our members in the audience who are joining us, we are probably one of the largest melting pots in the world with different people from different cultures and religions and languages. I think our schools speak over 80 languages. And so we always try to make sure that we have a variety of those who are opening up the invocation. So if you are a minister of faith, of a particular faith, we welcome you to do that. But we appreciate you coming to us. Tell us, briefly tell us a little bit about yourself and the Universal Society of Hinduism.
Universal Society of Hinduism is a globally active organization, takes up Hindu issues globally. And I have opened the US Senate and the US House of Representatives with Hindu prayers. And we take up, and we do a lot of interfaith work also, working with other religious leaders and religions. And I have had dialogue with various religions worldwide from different denominations and religions. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Yes, sir. Well, we appreciate you coming to join us. And did you bring all this heat with you from Nevada? All right. If you all would, if y'all indulge us a minute, if you could come right up here, council, if we can get us a photo, to make sure they take that back to Nepal and to Nevada. All right, councilors, we move to the next item. We have a very special person in our organization. All of y'all are special, but tonight, this is her night. So Ms. Willie Johnson and her family, if she could make it to the podium at this time. And I will meet you at the podium. Well, listen, Ms. Johnson has been a dedicated, and she is really the one behind the scenes that keeps us working. She has been over our IT department. We know what we can, that we can't do anything without technology. And so we are very dependent on that. But oftentimes, the hard work that they do, the long hours that they do to keep our city running, is not recognized very often. And she is leaving us. I've tried real hard to talk her out of it, but it didn't work. But we want to just give you a token of our appreciation for the many hours and years that you've dedicated to the city. Since 2015, you've worked hard tirelessly. And oftentimes, IT didn't get the recognition. But it's very important. Anytime my iPad, it was messed up, came and saw about me. But it says as follows, "On behalf of the Fayetteville City Council, employees, citizens, and citizens of Fayetteville, North Carolina, our city key and coin are proudly presented to Willie Johnson in grateful recognition of her devoted interest and untiring commitment to the citizens of Fayetteville while serving with the Fayetteville Information Technology Department from April 13, 2015 to July 1, 2025." Thank you.
Thank you.
I say a few words. This is totally a surprise, because I talked to my husband a few minutes ago, earlier, and I said, "I'm not going to be home on time. I'm going to be at the council meeting." So Kim, I don't know who planned this and called him, but it was a total surprise. So I am very honored and grateful to have served as the city's IT CO for the last couple of years. It's been a great, great experience to me professionally and personally. I want to thank the city council for their support. Dr. City Manager Hewitt, ACM Yates, thank you so much for entrusting this opportunity to me. I'm going to miss all of you, but I'm going to enjoy some time with family. And I do appreciate the opportunity. Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you could go to the podium. So, right now, we have a very special award that we would like to give to someone that is very dear to a lot of us sitting here at the city council and to Fayetteville. So with that being said, we are giving the key to the city to our own Laverne Oxendine.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the city of Fayetteville, the mayor and city council, our city key and coin are proudly presenting to you in grateful recognition of your devoted interest and unwavering commitment to our community. Every community needs an advocate, needs an ambassador, needs a champion. And he is always pro-Fayetteville all the way, regardless of what's going on. And so your efforts are appreciated. The city council and myself and others want to make sure that you're recognized with the highest honor that we can present.
The city of Fayetteville has really improved my self-esteem over the years. And I love downtown. I love what the city has done for this downtown. You're really an advocate for downtown. I must say that. I won't say some other words about another part of our components. But anyway, I love you all. I love how you support the military. I love how you support all the backgrounds, all the diversities of people here, all those that speak different languages, different religions. And I will say that again. You've helped me to improve my self-esteem over the years. And thank you very much.
Wow. Yeah, they surprised you. And thank you to Ms. Willie Johnson, to Mr. Laverne Oxendine, to all who are doing great things in this community. We'll continue to highlight your work and your efforts. And we appreciate all of your efforts to make this city a better place. And we appreciate that. At this time, councilors, we move to, okay, all right, councilman over here.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this opportunity. He is not here this evening. Mr. Nero Coleman, he is battling. We all know what battling is. And he's battling, his wife is battling. And I've been trying to get him here for the last two meetings, could not get him. So I'm going to have to go to his home. But tonight, he was going to receive a beautiful certificate, a beautiful plaque, and a coin. But we just could not get it, things together for him to get down here. So I will be going to his home to make this presentation. And just wanted to say a big thumbs up to Mr. Nero Coleman. He's been one of our city advocates for years. He's a former, former SGA president for Fayetteville State University. He's a veteran. And he loves doing what he does in uplifting our city. So, Mr. Coleman, if you are listening, or one of your friends or your neighbors are listening, let them know that your presentation is on the way. It's going to come to you. Thank you again. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. Councilors, we move to the next item. We'll go to announce. Mr. Manager, do you have anything? Where did he go?
I never know.
Who does? Okay.
Hey, Mayor.
All right. So obviously, I'll assume that you...
I do have a brief update, Mayor. Thank you for that. It is two things. First, I would ask Assistant City Manager Jody Phelps to come and talk about out front very briefly. And as she comes up as well, I'd ask John Jones, if he is here, if he could come up as well. And I'll ask her to do, help me make introductions, introductions of our new Officer of Community Safety Director as well. Jody.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and our audience. We want to remind everyone in the community and our residents to join us this Thursday evening at the Bill Crisp Senior Center at 6:30. It will be the next Fayetteville Out Front. And this topic this time is the Office of Community Safety. So we know this is a conversation that a lot of our community members are excited to have. And it's perfect timing, because we're going to be able to publicly introduce the brand-new director of the Office of Community Safety, Mr. John Jones.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I don't know if I can touch this. Oh, yeah, I can. Just want to make sure. Good afternoon, City Council. Real quick, just want to say a huge thank you to Dr. Hewitt, City Manager, as well as the Assistant City Managers for allowing me to be here. Also, want to shout out to Nichelle Gaines or Orlando Smith, who have been running the show while I've been transitioning. It is a huge and deep honor to serve not only the city of, the city council, but also, and more importantly, the community here, who is here today. I know we have a lot of work to do. I have been following track the past two months, ever since Dr. Hewitt and I had a discussion. So I'm excited to get to know people, get to know faces, get to know resources, and just know that the OCS, we will be at your events. We will be outside, and that we look forward to working with you all greatly. And again, it's a deep honor to come back home and do what I've been doing around the nation, and come back and make Fayetteville not just a safer city, but also have a higher quality of life and how OCS can play a role in that. So again, thank you all for having me here. I'm Pentecostal, so I'm going to sit down before I start preaching. But nonetheless, thank you all.
Thank you.
That's all, sir.
All right. Well, welcome, sir. Councilors, we move to 6.0, the approval of the agenda. Entertainer motion to approve.
I make my...
All right. Is the motion by Mayor Protim Jensen to approve?
Yes, yes.
All right. The second by Benavente? All right. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Our council, I'll look to you for your votes. Motion carries unanimous by those voting. Moving to the consent items.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. It's motion by Mayor Protim Jensen to approve consent. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Thompson. Discussion on the motion. Council, I'll look to you for your votes for consent. All right. Motion carries unanimous. Those voting. All right. Council, moving to the next item, 8.0, the public hearings. At this time, we are preparing to hold a public hearing where city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak in the hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We will begin with a staff presentation, then we will move forward into the formal hearing. Fifteen minutes will be allowed by those in favor and those opposed of the item concerned and discussed in the hearing. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement, a single spokesperson has been designated, in which case that spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. Then you may begin to address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, means you have 30 seconds remaining. And at the conclusion of your time, you will hear the buzzer ring, and that means that your time, a lot of time has ended. So at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Keisha. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. The state of North Carolina has petitioned to close a portion of Arsenal Avenue to further develop the site for the North Carolina Civil War and Reconstruction History Center. This portion is shown on the map on the screen. The North Carolina General Statutes require a public hearing to be set, which on May 12, we set for tonight. The real estate division has contacted the local utility companies to determine their need to reserve the area for easements. And we will be reserving an easement for Bright Speed, PWC, Charter Communications, and City Stormwater, as requested. Fire, EMS, the police department, and traffic were all contacted to determine any effects on the response times. And due to traffic flow not being impeded in any way, there was no issue with that. The notice of the public hearing was published in the local newspaper. Certified letters were mailed to the adjacent property owners, and the property was posted as required by the North Carolina General Statute Section 160A-299. Staff found no issues with the proposed closing. And are there any questions for staff?
Don't see any, Ms. Keisha. Let's see how that remains. So with that, seeing no questions with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have two speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Mr.
Mayor, we have two speakers for this item, our first speaker is Mr. John Mackeely.
Mr. Mack, how are you, sir?
I'm good, how are y'all? Jimmy Kaiser is next, he'll answer all those technical questions, I'm just here in case anybody had any other questions. We've all been through this for a number of years, about fifteen by now.
Yeah, alright, any, I don't see any questions for you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jimmy Kaiser.
Mr. Kaiser, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well, how about you?
Good.
Good to see y'all tonight, Jimmy Kaiser, 115 Broadfoot Avenue, thank you. Pretty much, it's a straightforward case here, we're looking to close the road to accommodate the construction of the museum, and if you've seen the layouts, it kinda goes across the road, so that's why we're closing it, the road doesn't go anywhere, if there are any technical aspects of it, I'll be happy to answer it, but I don't wanna waste everybody's time, so I'll leave it at that unless y'all have any questions.
Don't see any, Mr. Kaiser.
Great, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have no further speakers for this item.
Alright, so with that, I'll close the public hearing, council, I'll go to Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I make a motion that we...
Oh, did you have a question? Okay, those are seconds.
Alright, there we go, I'll make a motion that we close that portion that's referenced on Arsenal Avenue for the building of the museum.
Alright, is the motion by Councilmember Green to close, to grant the street closure proposal, and is it seconded by Councilmember Davis, any discussion? Alright, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Alright, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those voting, alright, motion carries. Alright, Ms. Keisha, I think you're back up with us.
I am.
Alright.
Good evening again. The trustees of the Church of God of East Fayetteville, also known as Supona Road Church of God, have petitioned to close a portion of Bullock Street to further develop their property. Currently, the portion that's shown on the map has never been constructed or opened as a street. Again, North Carolina General Statute requires the public hearing to be set, and we set that for tonight on May 12th. The Real Estate Division contacted the local utility companies and will be reserving an easement for Charter Communications as requested. Fire, EMS, the Police Department, and Traffic were contacted and there were no effects to response times due to traffic flow again not being impeded. The notice of the public hearing was published in the local newspaper, certified letters sent to the adjacent property owners, and the property was posted as required by North Carolina General Statute Section 160A-299. Staff found no issues with the proposed closing, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am, alright, with that, Councilmember here, is there a question?
That's for the motion, sir.
Okay, alright, hold that thought, alright, so I don't see any questions, so with that, we'll open the public hearing, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have one speaker, Pastor Aaron Wilson.
Good to see you, Pastor. Alright, council, any questions for Pastor Wilson? Alright, with that, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Alright, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and council, I'll go to you, Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor, I move that we adopt the resolution and the order by City Council, City of Fayetteville, for the closing portion of Bullock Street.
Alright, this is motion by Councilmember here to grant the motion to close the street, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Davis, any discussion? Alright, council, I'll look to you for your votes on this motion. Alright, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous, motion carries, Ms. Keisha, back to you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Newton, how are you, sir?
It's nice to be in front of you, Dr. Newton, Development Services, and Mr. Harmon will be assisting in the presentation of our consultant, the consultant that you have for the sign ordinance rewrite is Vaughn Henson. Vaughn and Benchmark are familiar to many of you because they've been involved with the city for a lot of different purposes. As a planning organization well-recognized around the many states, it's a pleasure to be working with them in so many positive ways, and one of those is taking a sign ordinance that is more than twenty years old and getting it current and not losing the structure of being a development-friendly community. This also went through the UDO Housing Task Force, so it's coming to you after having gone through quite a bit of filtering, and Vaughn will be leading you in that presentation. Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, as Dr. Newton said, we had some, a big task ahead of us with the sign ordinance that hadn't been updated in quite some time, we began working with the staff to define a purpose and goal for the update of the sign regulations. One of the things that was at the top of mind was eliminating conflicting sign regulations throughout the ordinance, consolidating those into the single chapter that's really dedicated to that, ensuring that there's content neutrality in the regulation of signs, providing better incentives for people to have higher-quality signs, improving the equity of the application of the regulations to signage in the city, but also maintaining the current maximum sign allowances that are allowed under the current provisions of the UDO. So one of the things we did was try to consolidate and reorganize things to make it flow better in the ordinance itself. As we were beginning the process, we noticed there were regulatory provisions for signs found throughout the UDO, I believe there are sixty-one pages of the ordinance in total that had sign regulations on them in some form, not all that can be moved, but we did what we could to make sure that we were eliminating kind of stray provisions that had been inserted over the years. We consolidated some of those provisions and eliminated others that were either duplicative or conflicting with each other, and we organized Section 35 dot, 30 dash 5L to eliminate redundancies and improve the clarity by reclassifying signs by type. There were some function-based provisions in there, as well as classified by whether they required a permit or not. So in the current way that the ordinance classifies those is by prohibited, exempt, signs that are permitted without a permit, signs that require a permit, signs permitted in non-residential districts, and signs permitted with a special use permit. So it's kind of, maybe a little bit more difficult to find the particular type of sign that you're looking for as you're looking through the sign regulations as it's currently composed. So we tried to consolidate that down, make it more rationally applied, to have prohibited and exempt signs, temporary signs, and permanent signs, and then classify those basically by the districts they're allowed in or the circumstances they're allowed in. Some proposed changes of note, these were discussed with the Planning Commission as well as with the UDO Committee. One of the big things we did with temporary signs, we reclassified those by a generic type versus the current classification, which is primarily done by their purpose or function. That's proposed to simplify permitting and administration, but also to ensure some content neutrality and maintain compliance with Supreme Court's opinion in Reed versus Gilbert. So the proposed classification of temporary signs, instead of having a very long list, currently having political signs, real estate signs, really ad nauseam in the types of signs that are listed as temporary signs in the ordinance now, we assigned these generic classifications to them, so we have essentially type one, two, three, four, and five signs, and you can see those, how they're associated with the typical type of sign, so yard signs, freestanding banners, larger freestanding signs, such as those that are typically used for construction or development signage, type four signs are sandwich board or sidewalk signs, we typically see it in a downtown area, and type five being feather flags, and finally, temporary wall signs, things you can see like a banner on a building for a grand opening or something like that. With regard to permanent wall signs, the current regulation limits the size by essentially the length of the building wall or the tenant's space that it's displayed for. This penalizes what might be a taller or bulkier building, because you're only measuring the length of the building versus the actual bulk or size of that building wall that it's going on to. So at the recommendation of the UDO Committee, actually, we had proposed some changes to that, but they had recommended that we allow to use either the current, the greater of the, either the current one square foot per linear foot of building wall, or to account for those larger bulky buildings, allow them to use ten percent of the area of the building wall. So that allows for a larger shopping center-type building to have a larger sign than they would currently be allowed. We also added some design incentives that will allow an increase in the area beyond those base maximum limits for people that are providing a higher-quality type sign. With regard to freestanding signs, we established a minimum sign allowance for ground signs in non-residential districts, so you basically start out with a base minimum amount that you can have, currently it's based only on the width of the lot, so a more narrow lot might be penalized a little bit compared to a wider lot. We did reduce the area calculation per linear foot due to the oversized signs that might be on a smaller fifty-foot light lot that you might see in your neighborhood commercial or office in a traditional district, but we did maintain the current maximum allowed sign size, so those with wider lots could still put up same-size signs as they can today. And again, like the wall signs, we added incentives that allow an increase in area beyond those base maximum limits for higher-quality design of the sign. So what stayed the same, essentially the prohibited and exempt signs, the regulations you have today are carried forward, except where needed to address any issues with things like content neutrality, retain provisions where you have special event signage that you can get a permit for, business opening signage, signs allowed on city property, standards for billboards and other outdoor advertising-type signs, downtown signage was maintained essentially intact with just some reorganization to make it flow like the rest of the ordinance, and as well as retaining your ability to have alternative signage plans, which are approved by the Planning Commission. That allows property owners with a unique or special type of property or a larger development proposal to propose their own types of signage, their own sizes of signage, and have that approved separately versus maintaining strict compliance with the ordinance. Just generally, the effects of the amendments will be limited to a certain extent with regard to existing signage, there's a provision in Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes that essentially allows a two-year period for somebody that removes an existing sign to be able to replace it with the same type of sign on the different portion of the property, as long as, as long as it was legally established at the time that it was removed. So essentially, anything that's lawfully erected would be subject to your non-conformity provisions, your non-conformity provisions have to abide by state statute. And so this means that the sign ordinance, as it's currently composed, would be applicable only to new signs or new development, or somebody wanting to do something different than the kind of sign that they already have. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Alright, Councilmember here, is there a question?
Yes, thank you, sir, thank you for your presentation so far, we really have needed this. I guess I'm seeking out tonight for some clarification, whenever we look at type five signs, and this is something that the mayor and I had pushed a number of years ago, which were those feather, at least that's what I'm calling them, feather signs, let me get back to my notes here, right, so what my concern is, I see that as being a temporary sign, and I think I remember when we were first discussing this, that that's what this would be. When you say temporary, give me a ballpark timeframe that this new business owner or however it goes up, if it's a new business owner, existing business owner, when can they put them up, can they put them up more than one time and still be temporary within a certain period of time? When they're up, what is the period of time that, the timeframe that they can be up?
And so, the duration of display that's allowed for the type five or feather flag type signs, there's no limit on that, essentially, the temporary sign regulations are intended to regulate those signs that are not affixed permanently to a ground or the building, so you're not pouring a concrete base or having a brick base for it, or you're not screwing it into a wall. So these are signs that are intended to be replaced on some kind of regular basis, they might come and go, but there's no, there's no limit to the how long they can be displayed, or a time limit when they can start or when they'd have to stop.
Okay.
So that was the intent to carry forward, we understood there was a, the council desired for those types of signs to be allowed in general, and so just like the type one yard signs that you might have up in front of your house, there's no like limit to the duration of display of those either.
I had a, and I have two more questions, I had a concern from a commercial resident that was going out of business, they stuck up their, I call them sort of like political campaigns-style type signs, like twenty-four by twenty-four on a metal stake, and they were taken down, okay, I'm not sure what the, not positive now what the concern was. What is the status on putting those type signs up? Are they to be put up with, do they have to have a permit? How long can they stay up? I think that the business was going out of business.
Yeah, so there would not be a permit required, we do have some standards for those, basically allowing one of those small yard signs per two hundred feet of road frontage, there are some special provisions for opening and closing businesses that allow some additional signage, but, I'm sorry, Jerry, but...
Perhaps I can help on this, there are a lot of signs that are being put in the right-of-way, those signs are prohibited, and different departments are taking those and pulling them, and every opportunity that we get to tell the people who have put those in, that they are prohibited signs in NC DOT right-of-way or city right-of-ways for streets, we do that, but there are thousands of them, and we've had several businesses that have been going, going out of business for years, and regularly are putting those in the right-of-way.
And I've, I think we've probably had some dialogue, at least through email, about this, so as long as it's not in the right-of-way, a business owner that is going out of business or doing some form with advertising for a short period of time can stick a sign up, or signs up.
Correct.
Okay, okay, now, my final question was this, and I was talking about this with one of my colleagues earlier before I came in, excuse me, are there any moral guidelines, any moral ethical guidelines of what can be put on a sign that's stuck up? Even the big signs, the big digital signs that we see to down here, can you just say anything you want to say, is there any such thing as moral and ethical morality when you're putting up signs or anything now, you can just do what you wanna do, say what you wanna say, and stick the sign up and it's okay?
I'm sure your attorney would want to follow me on this.
Yeah, I was looking at her.
But my, my understanding is that due to requirements to be neutral in the evaluation of a sign in terms of its content, that except for something that might be prohibited under the state statute by the criminal code, and I believe there is some criminal code regarding obscenity, et cetera, that the city would not generally be able to regulate the content of the sign.
So before the attorney speaks, then are you saying then, anything along that line, I guess we're gonna be looking from the state perspective, if it's turned in, that's, that would be your guideline if somebody like makes a phone call to us or to your office?
Yes, Councilmember here, the gentleman is one-hundred percent correct, unless it's obscene, people have their First Amendment rights to state what they want on a sign.
Okay, well, I won't take it any further, because I was getting ready to say, well, who can state what is obscene and not? And the reason I'm saying this, because many, many years ago, we had an issue with this in Fayetteville on the big digital signs of what was plastered up there, and a lot of citizens from across the city of Fayetteville complained about it, to the point that it was removed from that digital sign, so that was my concern, and it still is today.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Alright, Councilman Hodros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Hanson, good presentation, you mentioned the new formula, allowing for potentially larger sign on a high-rise building or multi-story building.
Yeah, really any kind of building that might, what, the circumstance we're trying to avoid is where a, say a strip shopping center that's maybe just, you know, has a twelve-foot high building wall, just because it's long, gets to have a lot of sign on it, whereas a larger, you know, shopping center-type of building, a Lowe's or a Home Depot or something along those lines, would only be allowed to have the same amount of sign based on its width versus the fact that it probably has a much bulkier wall face, yes.
So, and I appreciate that, that is something we talked about in committee as a priority, what about the main project or pylon side, the street-side signs?
Sure, there's a provision in there for, based on the project acreage, there's some increase in signage allowance for your freestanding signs at the entrance, really the alternative to that, and not meaning to repeat myself, but the alternative signage plan, if there's something for a large shopping center-type development, that would be a way to address that if the property owner wanted to do something that was different than what was generally allowed by the sign ordinance.
And that would apply to the Planning Commission?
That would go through the Planning Commission, yes, sir.
Gotcha, okay, thank you, I'm prepared... I'm prepared to make a motion following questions we answered.
Yeah, okay. I'll circle right back to you. Quick question. How many pages of our ordinance did you say pertained to signs?
The current, we extracted it from a PDF of a Word copy and went through and identified where the word "sign" was mentioned essentially. It was, I believe, 61 pages or so.
I only think that's a lot.
That's a lot. It's very small text in the way that your ordinance is composed. We've spread it out a little bit. We're down to 45 in this version, so.
So, again, as manager stated earlier, I mean, I think every administration has worked to try to simplify this document since it was passed. But how does that compare to the number, or the number of pages that are in other ordinances that you've seen?
Currently, probably a little much as proposed, probably about average, I would say. It's just really based on the philosophy of the community and the degree of regulations that they really have in their ordinance, and the manner in which the regulations are spelled out. Some attempt to do things in more tabular format or more graphical format. I tend to prefer words that convey the actual meaning of the regulation that you're trying to put out there. And then staff, your planning staff and others in the city can, you know, convey that through promotional materials and, you know, guides for residents and business owners that are looking to do, to add signage to their properties.
You sound like a politician. Let me ask you a little bit more direct. So how does our ordinance, the complexity of it, compare to other communities? That's what I'm trying to get to. Is it more stringent? Is it less? Is it harder to understand it because of the way it's written? How was your...
I think in its current form, I think the way that it's organized is, makes it more difficult to identify the regulations that are applicable to you, just based on the organizational aspect of it primarily. I think if adopted, I think what you've been moving to would provide a more rational kind of walkthrough of the different types of signs that are allowed. And from a restrictive standpoint, you know, the UDO committee requested some information on some peer communities throughout the state. We looked at Raleigh, Wilmington, Greensboro, Winston, somewhere else maybe. And, you know, I think if you look at it from a qualitative and quantitative standpoint, you're not really doing any more or less than most of your peers. And really, each community tends to have its own way that regulates signs. And so a direct comparison isn't really 100% going to be accurate. I think you're probably a little bit more lenient, more business-friendly, I think is how some people would probably put it, than some other communities out there. That's, you know, that's neither here nor there, really. I mean, it's the way that the city operates, which is fine.
Okay. But the way that it's written, I heard you say the way that it's written makes it a little bit more complicated. So it's not necessarily the rules themselves, but it's the way that it's spread out throughout the document.
I think that has something to do with it. Just also, as Dr. Newton mentioned, it's been a long time since it's been updated. The way that, you know, your average community regulates signs has changed a little bit over time. There's been new case law out there about things like, you know, content neutrality. And so there's just differences in how signs are regulated at the time the ordinance was originally written versus how it's typically done today if somebody's writing a new UDO.
So last question, Dr. Newton. Does this, is this a, is this a small fix in reducing the complexity of the sign ordinance? Or will this restructuring of language and shift of how we are being recommended if we adopt this, will this make it more easier to understand and less complicated? Because this is the complaint we get. It's not the rules.
The answer is no, yes, and yes. So it's not more, it's not more complex. It is a, it is not a temporary fix. It's a permanent fix that doesn't need a rework of it, unless there should be more case study, law that works through the courts that requires some changes. This is a document that, as you heard, is designed so it continues to move forward. It can move into another document. And I interrupted you, but you were giving me more than my mind could retain to answer. So go ahead.
No, I think you got it. I'm just trying to make it simple. I think people are okay with rules if they know what they are. And that's the biggest complaint we get a lot of times, is that people just don't understand what are we asking, so.
And I do think, I do think that what you heard is, there has been difficulty in figuring out what section applies. That's been cleaned up with this.
Good. All right. Thank you. All right. So Councilman Mahndros, ready for you?
It's a, this is a public hearing, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. I'm not too far. We got carried away. All right. So with that, we will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, you have no speakers.
All right. That we close the public hearing. Councilmember Mahndros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the proposed tax amendments as recommended by staff and the consultant.
All right. It's motion by Councilman Mahndros, second by Councilmember Green. Discussion. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries. Moving to 8.04. I see Mr. Rob Patton and his team here, Yaden Domes. So, Mr. Harmon.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and members of counsel.
Good evening.
So this is our first annexation to come before you this year. Annexation 2501. This is Global, Phoenix Global Support LLC is the applicant and owner of this 12 and a half acre piece of property at the end of Bridgewood Drive. As you can see, this property is kind of, well, you've got Airport Road here, Bridgewater coming, Bridgewood coming off of it here. It is at the end of that. The airport is just off your screen here to the right. You can see where this is contiguous to the airport property and the city limits, and then touches some other what are non-contiguous parcels as well. Just the survey of the piece of property we're looking at. Again, the subject property, a little hard to get an actual on-the-ground picture of it, but it's kind of this cleared area here for the most part, again, coming off of this road here. Again, the stuff surrounding it, you have a couple of businesses to the west and south. You've got to the north, more open property, and to the east, part of more open property. So it's mainly, a lot of open property around it, part of which is, I believe, part of the cemetery, but some is part of the industrial parkish area there. Water and sewer is available to the property. Professional planning staff and the zoning commission have recommended approval of this. Petition for annexation complies with the requirements of the North Carolina General Statutes. City clerk has certified the sufficiency. The annexation aligns with the city's 2040 future land use plan. Upon annexation, property tax burden will increase due to the imposing city taxes on the property. It will still be in the county's fire district tax, tax district, sorry, and special fire tax and recreation tax. Appendix A in your packet outlines the details of fiscal impacts, including stormwater revenue, anticipated property taxes, and things of that nature. Should you decide to adopt this tonight, you have several options on dates to make this effective, starting with tonight, and then listed as you see here in the options. If you have any questions of staff, mayor, and counsel, if you'd please hold those till after the public hearing is conducted. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. So with that, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have three speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Mr. Rob Patton.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Rob Patton, Executive Vice President for the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation, requesting approval of this annexation request. You know, three months ago, you all graciously approved the incentive package for Yaden Domes, which at the time was known as Project CrossFit. And earlier this evening, the rezoning request was approved. This is the final step before construction will begin. And at that point, the world will know that Yaden Domes are made in Fayetteville, North Carolina. So with that, subject to any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Councilman Mahndros had a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Patton.
Yes, sir.
Question for you. Does Yaden Domes have a preference if council was to approve this tonight of the effective date today or next week or next year?
Sir, I'll defer to the CEO who's going to talk momentarily.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jimmy Kaiser.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll defer to comments. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Madam Clerk.
And our final speaker is Mr. Matthew Mejia.
Hey, sir. Good to see you.
My name is Matt Mejia. I'm the CEO of Yaden Domes, currently 575 Southeast 9th Street in Minneapolis. Soon to be, I hope Bridgewood Drive here in Fayetteville.
Glad to hear that.
So I, we just, we have been welcomed very warmly here. And, you know, this is after, I think I've been at the search for a new location for us for well over three years. And we've looked at a lot of sites and a lot of property all across mostly the mid-south and are really excited to be here.
I'm glad to have you.
So we have, I'll just say that we've already started to hire people from Fayetteville. I think our current head count, even though we're not here yet, of Fayetteville residents is, I think, close to 10. And we expect to be up around 70 when all is said and done.
That's good. Good. Glad to hear that. Councilman Mahndros had a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mejia. Do you have a preference of the effective date? Would you prefer that be today, next Monday, or next year?
Not next year. Monday.
Monday.
Next Monday would be excellent. Thank you.
All right. If there's no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Let me close the public hearing. Councilman Davis, that was a second. All right. All right. Thanks, sir. All right. Councilmember Mahndros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt the annexation ordinance with an effective date of June 30, 2025. This option affirms the initial zoning while delaying the effective date of annexation to the next statutory threshold, allowing additional time for service coordination or development readiness.
All right. It's motion by Councilman Mahndros, second by Councilmember Davis. Discussion on the motion. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Congratulations. Welcome into the city. All right. And counsel, moving to 9.01, evidentiary hearings. We are now moving into hearings that require the city council to hear sworn testimony. This is the evidentiary hearing. City council's decision must be based on competent material and substantial evidence presented during the hearing. All those who wish to speak must be sworn in and provide testimony under oath. Counsel, if there's a need to disclose any ex parte or individual conversations or communications regarding this matter, we give you the opportunity to do so at this time. With that, I'll ask the city clerk to affirm all of those who will participate in tonight's meeting. After that, professional staff will make the presentation of the case before we open the hearing. And Madam Clerk, you have any to swear in?
Mayor, we have one speaker, Mr. Buddy Jenkins. Do you see? Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Harmon?
I don't believe I see the owners here either. If you recall, this was a case that was set for your May 27 agenda, and the applicant and owners asked that it be moved during that meeting to tonight. They were sent another postcard and phone calls reminding them of this meeting, so...
Okay. I mean, do they need to be here for this?
Yes, sir. We need the evidence on the record. Yes, sir. But you could move to table it to a date certain, and we won't have to republish it?
If we could do that with the confirmation being reached before we put it back on the council's agenda, not a postcard, but is there a way to contact them to verify that they have received a notice? I think they were out of the country last time, and now you're saying you sent them mail, so how do we know they're back?
I sent mail and I sent a, I did a phone call to the company who was representing them that night as well.
So do we send certified notices to...
We do not send certified.
Are we able to do that in this case, just to make sure?
We can.
For people can sign and we can know that?
It's only going to be one or two notices, so yeah.
All right. So counsel, I'll look to you for a motion and maybe table this until I can make contact. Councilmember here?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. How would we table this? Would we table this to our second meeting in August? Because our first meeting is a work session, right?
Yes, sir. It sounds like the mayor's suggestion was not setting it for a date certain until we made contact with the applicant.
Yeah, we don't know if we... I hate to set a date and then...
So we're going to just...
You can just table it. It'll be open, and we'll have to renotice everything.
Mayor, may I move that? We table this to a later date.
All right. All right. Motion by Councilmember here. Councilmember Benevente, you had?
Yes, sir. I would just ask that we save some money and not renotice this all over again and just make, put it on for the 25th of August. Is that this right, next regular council meeting in August? Or the last council meeting in August? I think that'll give us plenty of time. So maybe I would just ask that maybe Councilmember here consider making that date August 25th?
Well, I didn't have a problem from the beginning. That's what I wanted to make a motion on it. But I was trying to go along with the confirmation. So if I could, I would like to just hold it until we receive the confirmation, and then we could go ahead and set a date that way. Then we wouldn't have to go through the republishing and all that again, would we still?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I would, I'll leave the vote as is.
All right. All right. It's a motion by Councilmember here to table it until confirmation is reached for a later date and then scheduled. Is there a second?
Mayor, I apologize. I don't know that we understood that last question. I think the city attorney...
I understood it fully, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure for staff. So, yes, ma'am?
Well, we're going to restate the motion right now as to table it.
No, my question is, if it is tabled to a time not certain, just until you bring it back, will we have to republish it in a newspaper to make people...
Yes.
And if we're going to have to publish it in a newspaper, who's going to pay that $1,000? Because that's typically, what is the cost to notice this?
The actual cost for the postcards are not...
A postcard, but it's not in a paper publication for?
It would have to be in the paper as well. There's the postcard, the paper. That's usually about $300 to $400 in a paper. There's...
Let's just do this, and I think we can just kind of get this whole thing. Let's go ahead and make... Am I on here?
I just, I just put you on. No, just trying to turn you on. Huh? That, he did that.
How did I do that? You got the main controls over there. Well, I talk a lot of them. So what I was saying was, let's go ahead and just make it for that last meeting in August.
It's not muted.
Okay? Which is what day?
August 23rd.
Okay? We'll make it for August 25th. You all will move forward with, you all will move forward with confirming that they have received it, that they will be here. Because nothing changes. Because if they do not, and we don't hear from them, we still have the option to do what we're doing tonight again, correct?
Yes.
So if so, Mayor, I'd like to pull that motion back and restate it that we table this to August 26 upon, 21, 25th, upon confirmation that the petitioners have been contacted.
Okay. All right. So again, that's a motion to do it with a date certain. So again, that's a motion to do it with a date certain. Now, Madam Attorney, the difference between this motion with a date and the previous motion that just tabled it, are you saying this one does not have to be republished because we put in a date on it?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, so, okay, all right. But we still need to confirm, because if they don't show up next time, then what happens? It just comes off and that's it?
You move to deny it.
Okay, all right. So there's a motion by Councilmember here for the August 25 date. Is there a second? Second about Benevente. Discussion on the motion. All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Did we figure out what's going on with his microphone? Told you it wasn't me. All right. Motion chairs. All right. Council moving to 10.01, PWC Determination of Utility Assessment Appeal. So Ms. Lexi back there from PWC, the representative of PWC? Are they here?
Yes, sir. That's Attorney Tim Smith for PWC.
Okay. Attorney Smith, good evening.
Good evening. This is an appeal involving a property owner. It's my understanding that he, at one point in time, this is in an area that's being annexed, obviously, at one point in time was the owner of two parcels of land. And as you know, the city must make a sewer assessment pursuant to our annexation agreement for each parcel of land or that PWC constructs lateral connections to. And in that sense, it's a sewer construction assessment. In this matter, the individual, he is now appealing this, saying that he has since combined his two parcels into one parcel, so as a result, he should only be assessed for one sewer assessment fee. The problem with that is that at the time, he was notified of the preliminary assessment resolution for this particular phase of the project. There was a public hearing held, and it's my understanding he did not make any objection. That was in 2020. There's a whole history here where he had, I'm not alleging there's any wrongdoing on his part, but he had deeded one of the parcels or, yeah, one of the parcels to another individual and had it deeded back to him. And long story short, during that period of time, PWC had the construction design meeting where he was notified of the work that was going to be done of both parcels. And again, it's just a lateral being built properly to connect to his property. Time went on. He failed at the public hearing for the, when the assessment recommendation and the public hearing was, was noticed, was mailed to him. He did not make any sort of objection at that time. And he, long story, in December of 2024, however, prior to the assessment being certified, being approved by the City Council in February, he combined both parcels into a single parcel. The issue, I would argue, is that he had ample notice over the course of a couple years of all the work and design and engineering work that was going to be done and that ultimately was done on the property. His property now has two lateral connections, and at some point in time, he could conceivably subdivide again and build on the property that he's now claiming he should not be assessed a sewer assessment for. That's the, that's the history of this matter, Your Honor. And again, I think it kind of hinges on the fact that he was given notice and aware of all these things and failed to object to the work being done at his property and the sewer assessment that was coming down the tracks. And then he, he still nonetheless combined it just before the assessment role was confirmed by the city.
All right, thank you. I think this to gentleman here, Mr.?
Thank you very much. I am the owner of the property, 8038 King Road, and the property that I want to try to get an appeal on is the 8048. I combined both properties because I wanted to get only one tax bill and end up having all of the properties in just one area. Now, the thing is, is I've attended meetings on these things, but sometimes when it gets down to the understanding of some of these things that they're doing without trying to talk to somebody, and sometimes it's hard to get to talk to somebody everybody else is talking to. So I didn't understand a lot of it. Then when they started putting in the connections, I told them, well, I don't know why you're putting one in there, because I'm not going to have anything there. It's got a privacy fence around all my, all my whole yard, privacy fence, dividing that yard up beside me, and there's nothing going to be built on it. It's my front yard, backyard, all combined together, and nothing else is going to be on the property.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Attorney? Madam Attorney, did you press your light? Okay. Mr. Attorney, question for you. So basically, with this process, you all make plans to install sewer ahead. It's been going on since when? When would you say the annexation first started, the Phase 5?
Well, I think for...
20 years?
Twenty-some years.
Okay.
And as to this appellant, the survey and appraisal notice was mailed to him, I believe in April of 2018, which sort of kicked off the chain of events for his property.
Right. So in 2018, which is 18 years into this process that PWC has been doing, you, you're saying because you started drawing plans at that time, that that indefinitely removed his ability to combine his own land into one parcel? Because you're, part of what you said in the beginning was that he, we had already drawn these plans to do that. So you, so you're saying he should pay? So when, when you all get at a, get to a point of where you draw plans for whatever timeline, because it's been a long time that you do it?
Right.
You're now taking the rights of someone away to say, I want to combine my property from two to one?
No, I'm sorry. That's not what I'm saying at all. I mean, this annexation is something the city is doing. PWC is essentially just there to construct...
Well, you're our utility. We don't have to order sewer department, so that's you.
And I'm not saying that at that point, at the beginning, I'm just informing the council that much later in the process, there would have been a design, he would have been notified of the design, the construction that would be impending on his property. Again, that's after 2018. That's in 2019. He would have seen that construction. You know, he mentioned that he saw them doing this work. And then there would have been a, an assessment recommendation and notice of public hearing mailed to him. So he would have been on notice that he was going to be assessed for these two parcels. Then there would have been subsequently an actual assessment confirmation meeting, which, and again, that was held just this past February in 2025. To answer your question, I'm not saying he can't recombine his property. There is a legal argument to be made, though, that he was enriched. His property was improved by the work done there. Again, he can subdivide it and it'll be ready to go if he chooses to do that. He certainly has the right to combine his property at any point in time, and the question is, does he, is he obligated to pay the assessment, which is there to pay for construction of all of this infrastructure connecting each parcel? Obviously, he's, he's got the right to do with whatever he wants with his property.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my concern comes in with the email that the attorney sent us, referenced Mr. Mark Brown, you know, rest his soul, and Dr. Newton, who was CC with Mr. Chester from TRC. And it refers to the properties, I think, the six of them listed on that property, where all of them were notified about building on two parcels on one piece of land. They were notified. So at that time, he was aware that he had two parcels. I think that gives PWC ample enough time to let him know that you need to combine these parcels if you only want to be assessed one fee. I also have heartburn that this didn't come until after they already put in the laterals. If the laterals wasn't in already, then I would fight more for it, but somebody has to pay for the work, sir, after they have already put in the laterals. That's what my stance is. So I won't be able to approve this assessment, Mr. Mayor.
Got you. All right, thank you. Councilman Mahendros, did I see you?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith, if council was to grant the appeal this evening, and Mr., the owner, Mr., is it Stoudt? Stoudt, has stated it's, today it's one parcel. There's no intention of subdividing the property. Let's say he won the lottery and decided to move to a different country, and someone else purchased the property and decided to subdivide it and have two separate parcels. Would there be a tap fee when they constructed that second parcel at that time?
Yes. I think there would be a connection fee, like a tap fee. Don't quote me on that. Again, that's sort of outside of my wheelhouse at PWC. I mean, but he, but that subsequent new owner would have avoided paying this assessment for the annexed property that everyone else paid for, for that parcel of land, if that makes sense. So if someone could come in and they would have the benefit of all the infrastructure being there, all the surrounding property owners would have paid this assessment.
So your, your case is that, or your argument is that there's two laterals there, so you could have two structures there, right? So that's how the property's enhanced, where this, this individual's saying he doesn't want or need that enhancement. So my question to you is, in the future, if, if the council agrees with the property owner and feels that he should only pay for the one hookup, in the future, whether it's he's still the owner or there's a new owner and they decide to have two structures, would they have to pay at that time to hook up? Is my question. So it doesn't matter to me really if it's an annexation fee or if it's a new construction tap fee, as they're called. Will it be paid in the future or not?
Well, I mean, there would be fees associated with building a house on that new parcel and the connections you'd make to the water and sewer at that point in time. But again, there would be, you would not have paid for the work that was done to bring it there, which is something that is common among all the other annexed properties. So I'm not, this is not about whether or not someone should pay a connection fee. This is about whether they should be assessed for the...
Infrastructure.
Engineering, the infrastructure, the planning that goes into extending and designing how the system is spread to each parcel. There's only one time that that's done, obviously, so I think that's what you mean.
It's not, but that's okay.
All right. Madam Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, Councilmember Mahendros, I might be able to bring this around from personal experience. So when everything got annexed and all these situations were coming in, that people had different parcels or things like that, and they were beside each other, they would say, okay, I'm going to put everything in one parcel, so alls I have to do is pay one hookup fee. And I know this from personal experience. So you can have three to five acres pulling off of that one thing. The issue that comes to arrive is you either pay now or you pay later. So if you want to take that property and its two parcels, you will have to pay to hook up. And to pay to hook up now compared to what it was 20 or 30 years ago, or even five years ago, is completely different, because it's all on you to separate those pipes and to bring them, to get them together. So I, I have to agree with my colleague, Councilmember Thompson, that this has been a long process. It is two parcels, and at the end of the day, it's going to be better in the long run, my opinion. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I was up next. Just for more clarification, since there's already two laterals, if he was to build and split his parcels again, they would not have to pay the assessment, because he's going to pay the assessment for both properties. If we just, if we approved his, then they wouldn't have to pay, because now we have just waived that money and we're paying it out of our pocket, because PWC has already done the work. Does that give you clarity?
I understand what y'all are saying. I'm not certain y'all understand what I'm saying.
Okay.
So if you have a vacant property and there's nothing on it, there's no utilities to it, and then we go to PWC and ask them to bring utilities to it, we have to pay a tap fee, okay? This lateral is already built, presumably nobody's going to pay for. And all I'm saying is, if this gentleman doesn't want to pay for it now, if in the future, six months from now, six years from now, 60 years from now, somebody wants to build something there and needs that tap, why can't they charge them for it then?
Well, they do. Well, how much is a sewer tap right now? It's at what, 18 grand, right?
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't know. I don't know. But I'll just make a distinction. This is, this is a special assessment.
And Lex, it's about 18,000, right? So PWC doesn't recoup that money back for the pipe when people pay to hook it up?
No, again, this is an assessment that has to do with the annexation project.
I understand what you're saying. You're, I got it. I got that.
Yeah.
All right. You're taking the infrastructure to a part of town where it didn't currently exist, but that is now the city.
Right.
So what you're saying is you're assessing to do that, that I'm going to tax and bill everybody for the pipe we're running there. Then when they hook up, that is not an assessment, that's a hookup fee, and that goes straight to PWC, right?
I think so. Obviously, there's all kinds of economical decisions. There's a reason why...
I, I understand it. It's like, it's like us putting a road down somewhere that now has a paved road, and the property is enhanced because we ran a road down here. But it's in the city where infrastructure's needed. I don't want to belabor this, because this is not, I think this is a broader conversation. But, you know, I think what he's caught in, I just have a problem with, well, I agree with Derek. The timing in which you made your petition is after the fact. It's a little harder for me to fight for it, because I do believe it's your property. You should be able to combine it, divide it, whatever you want to do. But after they've ran it there and assessed it, it's probably a tough time to try to, to try to do that. But however, sir, had he, had he, had he had it combined at the time, his assessment would have been based on one, one lot, not two different lots.
Right. And again, the problem is that the work is, the costs are sunk, the work is done.
I understand.
For two.
All right. Councilman, Councilmember Green, I think?
Thank you. First, first opportunity. We deal with this every day in the real estate world. I'm probably certain that that's where Councilmember Mahendros is coming from. So there are proposed assessments and there are confirmed assessments, and we have to verify whether those assessments exist when we get ready to sell a property. So I don't, I'm pretty certain this could be done on this property, as my colleague was suggesting, because it is a confirmed assessment. He, it has, he is due the payment. Now, the question is whether he pays now or whether he pays later, or someone else pays instead of the current owner paying. If he doesn't use that, it's just like when we annexed everybody and everybody got water or sewer. It's exact, it's where we're at. Those folks, when they get ready to sell their home, if they never hooked up, they, they have a confirmed assessment, and if they never hooked up, then before they can sell their property, they either have to pay that or the seller, the buyer has to agree to pay that. So in that conversation, you, there is a way to hold that payment in abeyance. It's, it's not exactly the same, but it's very close. It's very similar to what we're up against. So in other words, PWC can show that that, that confirmed assessment, that assessment bill is due, and then it's just the payment is not due until such time as he either uses it or he sells the property, and then it's due. And how it gets worked out is dependent on what the two parties negotiate.
Yeah, I understood that. I don't think... I don't think he wants to be assessed in the first place.
Well, I understand, but sometimes that's a compromise. That's called compromise.
Gotcha. All right. Councilmember Mahondros, you had the second round.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just hopeful, two things. One, if anybody from the utility is here, so they can explain the difference for the listening audience, the difference between the annexation fee and the tap fee for new service. And then I think Mr. Stoud has something to say. I'd like to give him that opportunity.
Yes, I'd like to say that I've, I've worked for the city for 25 years. I couldn't say a whole lot about what was going on, because I love my job, okay? I was a firefighter at the time. And the thing is, is that I bought that property so nobody would build beside me, because I had a lot of problems with the people that lived there at the time. So I bought the property, was able to get it, and I wanted to leave it at that, and it's going to stay plain. It's going through my family, up to my son or my daughter, so, and there's, there's not going to be anything put there. So there's not going to be any hookup.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody from the utility, sir, that can answer that question?
Uh, yes. I'm going to do my best. A sewer assessment, like we're discussing, that is a different type of fee. And the basis for that is annexation, it is a very large project, requires planning and such, engineering, in order to obviously expand the entire infrastructure of the utility system out to this area. The sewer assessment is simply to defray those costs to the city and to P W C. But it's, it's related directly to the annexation project and the costs associated with that. It's also a very good deal for the annexed homeowners, because they get connected to the utility system upon paying that, that fee includes the connection. Is that right, Lexi? And again, $5,000. Now, a connection fee, the basis of that occurs when there's already infrastructure in place, you're simply connecting to it, and there's different calculations for, you know, the cost of that fee to P W C. I mean, obviously entailed in connecting to P W C, we now have all kinds of financial obligations to service your property, maintenance and the like. So the connection fee is geared towards payment of that. And I just hope that distinction makes sense, that they're really two different things.
So my colleague, Councilmember Green, suggested a, a fee, the, what do you call it, confirmed, confirmed assessment? Why couldn't we simply do that in this situation?
I, I didn't quite understand that her, her position on that. I mean, a confirmed assessment would be, I guess if property's going to change hands or you need to, in order, in preparation for sale of property, you have to make that, is that what your argument was?
Well, let me ask it a different way. There's two laterals there today, correct? On one parcel of property, there's two laterals, because at one time it was two parcels of property, but now it's been combined, so it's one parcel. There's two laterals. He's obviously using one for the structure that's there, correct?
Right.
No one's using the other one. No one's using the second one. So if and when, six days from now, six months from now, six years from now, or 60 years from now, somebody uses that second lateral, why can't we charge them at that time? That's my question.
Well, at that time, all the financing of the annexation project will have been in the, in the rearview of the city and P W C by 18 years or so. So again, this is all, this all has to do with financing this annexation phase.
All right. You, you had a question?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't get that. I understand exactly what they're, they're speaking of, because I've had it done, and I cannot understand why the gentleman or whomever in a future date is charged that assessment if they tap in to that area that he said he's not going to. I can't see why it's not, it could not be done whenever in the future or later. I, I don't understand.
Well, it, it could be done, and
And then the fee be charged then.
Well, it would, there would be no, that would not be the special assessment that is agreed upon. The, the city has agreed in a contract with P W C to make this assessment as a part of the Phase Five Annexation Agreement. The city has to make that assessment, because P W C is, P W C is not necessarily, this has not covered P W C's costs. P W C invests quite a bit more in making these connections. This is a way to defray costs. And so I guess to answer your question, Mr. Hare, at that point in time, obviously, the annexation would have been completed, but would have not, would not have been financed by a special assessment in this case, so.
Right. All right. Well, we're, we're not going to agree on, on financial structure. I think that's been a 20-year-old dispute with the city and P W C. I, I mean, it's perpetual fees you'll receive in addition to the 18,000 hookup that we think captures it. But your model at this time is you've ran the pipe, so you're here for an assessment. This gentleman has appealed, and so now, counsel, it's up to us to decide whether we support the appeal or deny the appeal, so.
Mr. Mayor, can Lexi Hasapas please come up?
Ms. Lexi, want to try to tell us something that we already
Hello, everyone.
What you, what do you need from her, Councilmember Mahondros?
Do you have a simpler explanation, possibly of the annexation fee versus the tap fees?
Yes.
And/or a confirmed assessment?
So Phase Five Annexation Construction is almost in a bubble, very different than if someone were to get, been annexed today, not in Phase Five. If you want to be connected to services today, you would pay kind of an all-encompassed fee, like the mayor was saying, about $18,000, depending on your property and what kind of construction. That would be construction plus fees. Annexation Assessment is, just like Tim said, it is for construction only. City Council tapped that, tapped, tapped that, no, capped that at 5,000. This particular project, I think, was about $100,000 per parcel, construction fees. Assessment fees are only 5,000. P W C ratepayers pay the difference. Two con, two different construction projects happened at this parcel. That's why he's being assessed twice. Does that make sense? Just for construction. If he chose to connect, he'd also have connection fees. For instance, 50% of the customers in annexation connect. So 50% are paying assessments but not connecting. Same thing for the second parcel. Does that make sense?
So why couldn't we simply, when they connect in the future, add the annexation fee plus the tap fee?
That would be an attorney question. I don't know that that is possible in Phase Five or not.
And plus, they, 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 they bond to put it in, and this is a way that they repay themselves to, to pay the debt service, so.
I hope I explained that correct. Construction costs and fees are different. Fees for connection are different.
Yes, thank you for that distinction. I just think the challenge or, or the concept that myself and some of the residents and some of my colleagues are wrestling with is paying for a lateral you didn't ask for.
Well, 50% of the annexed customers are doing just that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right.
So Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Third round, we got to vote now.
No, I'm, I'm making
Okay.
I just want some clarity, so people can understand. When they talk about annexation, annexation is mainly in the southwest part of Fayetteville. That's my district. I have fought for my residents over and over and over again when I thought there was an injustice. I don't think this is an injustice. P W C still has to be paid for the work that they have done. They're not a bank. They're not in the business of making loans, saying, I'll do the work now, and you could pay me 20 years from now. That's not the way this works. We capped it citywide at $5,000. That happened back in 2007. If the city didn't do it then, it would probably be $10,000, $15,000 today for annexation that's probably going to take five, 10 more years to complete in the southwest part of Fayetteville. Mr. Stoud, I understand your pain, I do, but timing is everything. And I think there was ample opportunity for you to combine those two parcels into one, so you would not have to pay the assessment fee. So as I stated before, I cannot approve this appeal, Mr. Mayor. So I move that we determine that Mr. Stoud does not have a valid defense to the tax imposed on any part thereof, and notify him in writing that no release or fund will be made.
So your motion is to deny the appeal?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there a second to that? All right. Motion fails for lack of a second. All right. Counsel, we do need to entertain a motion, either to approve this appeal or something else. Councilmember Benevante?
I move to approve the appeal.
All right. So motion by Councilmember Benevante, second by Davis. Discussion on the motion. This motion is to approve the appeal. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right. Madam Clerk, motion carries eight to one. Those voting opposition, Councilmember Thompson. So appeal is approved. So Mr. Stoud, I guess you'll get with P W C and legal, and they will tell you what that means. P W C, maybe when we come back on the next one, there may be a little bit more clarity in the explanation of it. All right, counsel, good job. I know it's a tough, tough decision to make. All right. Counsel, we're moving to the next item. Thought there was a, Councilmember Mahondros?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, this item was brought to counsel out of the U D O committee. Just to give a little brief history, counsel voted in consensus to move this forward. Our motion was very specific with timelines, with the motion, to send it to the Planning Commission June 17th, which they did, did go there and they discussed it, and then back to counsel today. The challenge came about when staff identified unattended negative consequences. Staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission was to remand it back to staff, which they did. I agree with staff's assessment and the Planning Commission's determination that it goes back to staff for more work. And if there's no other questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Ready for me? I move that we remand this back to staff, and the committee chair can work with our city staff in July. And if ready, we can present it, present the improved proposed revisions to the Planning Commission in August on their 19th meeting, and back to counsel August 25th.
All right. So motion by Councilmember Mahondros to submit this back, remit this back to staff. Is there a second by Benevante? All right. Discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Counsel, I'm here.
Mr. Mahondros, explain to me, I want to make sure I'm understanding, this is, 10.02 is basically for exemptions? I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Just sends this back to staff. All right. Motion carries nine oh. So we'll look forward to hearing this item soon. All right. Mr. Adam. Is it your item, sir? Okay.
Mayor Cohen, I don't know if it was still counsel's interest to table this to the work session.
Yeah, it was. There were, there were a number of questions. So counsel, if we could get a motion to table this.
So move to table, item 10.03.
All right. So motion by Councilmember here to table. As we had discussed upstairs, there were some revisions or language revisions. So Councilmember Benevante is the second.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to clarify, did we want to just move it to the work session in August? And perhaps that could be the motion?
Yeah, I think that's what we had talked about, that just to make sure we had the language correct. There were a number of things
Yes, sir. That would be my ask, is just that perhaps the motion maker just move it to the work session in August.
All right. So motion by Councilmember Hare, second by Benevante, to move this to the August work session. Discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Sure is sleep tonight, ain't it? All right. Motion carries nine oh. Counsel before the adjournment, real quick, Tony, Mr. Tony Brown, can you stand up real quick? So Tony had had, I had asked him to come tonight, and I think he was still waiting on a number of, of his team. He's, he's deep back there, but have some of you guys stand up. We're going to be recognizing Mr. Brown and some of his youth mentor programs on August the 11th. So intended to do this earlier, but I know you wanted to have a lot of your team here, but August the 11th, we, I want to have a, some, a little something special for you. I know you're doing a lot of work in the community. These guys are doing some, some great things with, with helping our young people, but I do want to brag on you a little bit, but I want to give you a just due. So August 11th, the council will be out for break for the month of July. So the first council meeting in August. Come back and let's, let's chat a little bit. All right. But thank you, guys, for showing up. Y'all have been real patient during the meeting. We appreciate that. Much love to you. All right, counsel, motion
Motion to adjourn.
All right. 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 All right.